Good afternoon. We will now begin our rule development workshop followed by the board workshop. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougal.
Present.
Mrs. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Board members met for a policy work session on the policies for rule development on April 27th. Today will be the public's first opportunity to provide comments on the suggested revisions and new policy. The first policy is Policy 3215 Tobacco-Free Environment. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the revisions in this policy publicly? Is there anyone present who wishes to address the revisions in this policy publicly? Do any board members have anything in this policy they would like to discuss? Tobacco-free? All right, hearing none. Then next we have Policy 5830 Student Fundraising. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the revisions to Policy 5830? Is there anyone present who wishes to address the revisions to Policy 5830? Do any board members have anything they would like to discuss on Policy 5830 Student Fundraising? Hearing none. Does anyone have any comments they would like to provide regarding Board Policy 6144 Investments? Does anyone have any comments they would like to provide regarding Board Policy 6144 Investments? Board members, do you have anything you want to discuss regarding this policy? Hearing none, we will move on to a new policy, 6605 Crowdfunding. Is there anyone here who has come to publicly address Policy 6605 Crowdfunding? Is there anyone here who has come to publicly address Policy 6605 Crowdfunding? Or do you have anything you would like to discuss on this policy? All right, the last policy this afternoon is 8330 Student Records. Is there anyone present who wishes to publicly comment on this policy? Is there anyone present who wishes to publicly comment on Policy 8330 Student Records? Board members, do you have anything you would like to discuss on this policy? All right, that will conclude the rule development workshop portion. We will move on to our Head Start update followed by an Early Childhood update. Jane Klein, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Leading and Learning will introduce them both. Thank you, team, for being here for our policy.
Good job, everybody.
Good afternoon, Board, and Dr. Mullins. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you some great things that are going on, not only in Head Start, but we'll follow up immediately after Dr. Smith with Ms. Chappie and Priscilla Donino on early childhood, which we very rarely get to share much about early childhood with you. The work that goes on, we, in this field of early childhood, is the gatekeeper to our success. We can never repeat the first day of a child entering a school, the way they feel, the way they want to learn. So, we're very excited to bring this presentation to you. And, board members, as you know, being part of the governing board for Head Start, this is your update you get four times a year. So, today's update, Dr. Smith, will get started.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to share about our Head Start updates. I want to first go over our vision and mission, our vision to serve our community and enhance the lives of preschool students and families by delivering the highest quality education in a culture of dedication, collaboration, and learning, followed by our mission to serve every pre-kindergarten student and family with excellence as the standard. Today's agenda will include enrollment celebration, Consolidation Appropriations Act, professional development, classroom iPads, a dental hygienist, and also the board training. So, first of all, to talk about the enrollment celebration. During this 2020-21 school year, as you know, our funded enrollment is 624. We are currently at 512 Head Start students, which is 82% of our funded enrollment. It is a celebration because other grantees nationally are approximately 70% of their funded enrollment. Now, as a reminder from last board workshop, we did something special with our Head Start at home, not like our e-learning K-12, but the Head Start at home was for those families who qualified for the Head Start program but weren't quite ready to send their children into a brick-and-mortar setting. So, we sent home materials. They were assigned to a teacher. The teacher used ClassDojo, or a Teams meeting, or a phone call. The instructional assistant checked on the students, the families, and with the goal of having them be comfortable to come back to the brick-and-mortar setting where we could educate them. We began with 12 families. Oh, I forget to click this. No, now I'm back. We began with 12 families, and now we have five. Seven have come into the brick-and-mortar setting. So, we find that as a celebration, and those five still continue to be served. Next on the agenda is the Consolidated Appropriations Act. The Brevard Public School Head Start program will receive approximately $870,000. It's a one-time award based on our 624 of our fully enrolled, or funded enrolled students, and it must support activities to respond to COVID-19. We can use this over a two-year period. The allowable activities are listed here for you. They could include supports for mental health crisis response, interventions, meals not reimbursed by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, additional staff, professional development training, transportation support, additional educational activities, and supplies related to maintain the safe operation of the program. So, our team, our leadership team, has gotten together and say, okay, what can we, the Brevard Public School System Head Start grant, offer our families? Here's some things that are in the works. Dental hygienist, I'll come back to that in just a bit. Carpets that might need updated if we are able to go back to using carpets in a pre-K classroom. Outdoor spaces, possibly replacing the mulch with some rubber material. Transportation for our environmental specialists to ensure that all of our facilities are up to date. Playgrounds that are safe. Going into the community to help support our families. Meal and nutrition support. Do any of our families need transportation to receive a vaccine? We are excited with the opportunity for HVAC and ventilation improvements for our Head Start classrooms, as well as some portables that the floors need to be more secure. Instructional assistant training, and also training our family advocates to meet the needs of our families. Now, hot off the press, because I just met with Mrs. Klein yesterday, we are excited about the opportunity to offer an extended school year for our Head Start children who are four years old, who are going to be going into kindergarten. We have not worked out the details yet. Actually, right after here, I have another meeting to talk about the details. To extend the program's school year, these four-year-olds who will be moving into our kindergarten classrooms next year will be offered a chance to come in the month of June, schools to be determined, and this intentional summer program will support literacy and our kindergarten readiness skills. So, we're excited about that. Moving on to professional development, we have some professional development that we're very proud of this year. In the summer of last year, the coaches, myself, Ms. Barlow, and our educational consultant worked to create a needs assessment based on the Head Start competencies. It was given to all Head Start teachers. They rated these activities or competencies, and then my coaches developed training. Teachers sometimes say they don't, or pre-K teachers, we don't get training. The IAs are like, we want more training. So, well, they got it. We developed a voluntary Early Release Friday training opportunity for IAs and teachers, and I am proud to say that 150 participants were in the fall, and we had 135 participants in the spring that included both IAs and teachers, for a total of 285 adults participating in trainings. Now, were there prizes for incentives? Of course there were. Lots of books and things for kids and fun-type activities, but it was very successful. Some of the titles that we used during our professional development training was supporting our youngest learners, addressing trauma, mental health concerns, and social-emotional wellness, conscious discipline, the cutting edge of behavior management, think it, show it, tell it, talk it, how to influence behavior for students' success, transitions that are effective and support higher outcomes for children, creating a strong partnership with our teaching teams, and effective ways to read aloud to our pre-K classroom. So, another out-of-the-box thing, or new thing we did for professional development, is we created a newsletter. It was called The Scoop, and it was sent every Monday to Head Start staff. There are 32 editions this far, and it was a highlight and a celebration for teachers, for IAs, for students, and for their school. We highlighted staff. We highlighted school teams. That includes the two instructional assistants, as well as the teacher in every classroom. We highlighted events, and actually slipped in some information on improving instruction or instructional strategies during there. Our newsletter always focused on the three Cs: to communicate, to coordinate, and to build capacity. Lastly, with professional development, as part of the Head Start standards, it is a requirement of the Head Start teachers to set goals. There are 33 classroom teachers this year in Head Start. Each teacher had to write two instructional goals per semester, for a total of four, along with their instructional coach. This year, we included the instructional assistants to be a part of that goal because we're trying to build the team of the teacher and the two IAs to work with our students. So, the goals were monitored, the teachers were observed, feedback and coaching were provided, and we had 132 total instructional goals written with a focus on improving instruction. Now, some of the goals overlapped, but some of the main topics. 59 of the goals were implementing conscious discipline, 80 with class, or that's the teacher-child observations, the relationships between the adult and the child, and 52 aligned with FELD or Florida Early Literacy Development Standards. Moving on to classroom iPads, another great resource we're going to be able to provide our students. With strategic use of the CARES funds, all pre-K Head Start students, 624, will have an iPad. Each teacher will have an iPad. We have collaborated with our BPS tech integrators, as well as Apple trainers, to provide training for the teachers. This is going to focus on small group instruction with a teacher or an IA, not an independent activity or a babysitter with the iPad, but actually using the apps for instruction. The trainings will include iPad basics, classroom management strategies, explore iPad features and apps, and the modeling of lessons. On to my dental hygienist. This is a proud moment for Head Start. As you know, April 27th, there was a board agenda item to amend the Department of Health contract to add a dental hygienist to the Head Start program, so I want to thank you for approving that. Due to you approving that, we are in the process of working with the Department of Health to hire a dental hygienist. Now, what does that mean? Well, our children, our Head Start children, can receive fluoride every 90 days at their school site, no traveling to a dentist. Dental screenings and oral hygiene instruction will happen every six months, again, at the school site. These dental cleanings come with children who will sit in beanbags to receive these cleanings with this dental hygienist, a less scary event than a dental office, and our case management will be improved to ensure that all of our children are up to date on these exams. So, again, thank you, thank you, thank you for approving that to be able to be added to the Head Start program. And finally, board training. We have a two-hour board training that is going to happen? No, just kidding. But apparently, that did happen a couple of years ago. But there is, on the Board SharePoint site, under the Governance Resource folder, an AID is the Executive Summary Leadership and Governance, three-minute video, a program governance training, and an ERSI training that stands for Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection, Enrollment, and Attendance of Head Start Students. We would like this completed by June 30th, 2021. Now, this is a review for all current or past board members, but Ms. Jenkins, for all new board members, it is a requirement based on the Head Start program, and we would appreciate your participation in that. So, with that, I thank you for your time, and Ms. Chappie will be next. Any questions?
Yeah, Ms. McDougal.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate the update, and I'm very excited for everything that you're doing. I'm wondering, could, every now and then, would you send the board a copy of The Scoop?
Absolutely.
Just to see?
Absolutely.
It would be interesting to see what you're putting in there.
It is fun. It's a great celebration. I will do that.
And then I have just a goofy question. I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyhow.
Okay.
The iPads.
Yes.
Those are BPS property, right? We're not, are we giving them to the students to keep forever, or are they our property?
No, they'll be our property.
Okay, just checking.
Yes, they'll be our property, and actually, it will also help with our parents when they come in. If the child, if their child is not using it, the parent can use it to sit with the advocate and make appointments for doctor appointments, or maybe a job application, or things like that. But they will stay on-site as of right now. Even if they would go home, they would have to be returned.
Okay.
So, property of BPS. You are exactly correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Ms. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for this presentation. The 12 students that you talked about who were doing the Head Start at home?
Yes.
Are they included in the 512?
Yes.
Okay, so they're part of that 624 enrollment?
Yes, yes, they are. Good question.
Thank you. Oh, also, what are your enrollment numbers looking like for this coming year compared to previous years?
Well, we had our first selection date yesterday, and we start with all funded or under the poverty line children. Some of them can go up over the 100%, most of them are under 100% of the poverty line. And so, we made our first selection yesterday, and then it'll continue all through the summer. Our advocates, due to you approving them working one month longer, will work it during the whole month of June. Last year, it was approved also, but we were, you know, doing our thing, not working during June, and they didn't go out to homes and recruit, but they will be recruiting. So, we are in high hopes of getting closer to the 624, if not meeting our needs, or meeting our 624. That's our goal.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else? I have one for you.
Okay.
That is, it will likely need some follow-up.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you have heard that one of our county commissioners is moving to remove fluoride from the water in the North Brevard, the water service that serves MEMS.
Okay.
And obviously, we know that dental is, dental care is so critically important to academic success for our students.
Yes.
That we are, you have gone so far as to put a dental hygienist on our team to address that, right?
Yes.
So, I'm wondering, because I would like to have a conversation with our commissioner on that, do you have resources that are handy to you that you could provide to me about the importance of dental hygiene?
Absolutely.
For children and fluoride and?
Absolutely. I have it written down, and you will have it.
You're the best.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Dr. Smith? All right. Thank you so much. Awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And as Ms. Chappie moves forward, I wanted to share with you all that late last week, the Florida Department of Education decided to do an Early Childhood Workshop today. And so, we were already scheduled for here, so Dr. Smith and Ms. Chappie are here, and the session is going on. So, Tara Harris is in Lake Mary obtaining all that information, and then Ms. Chappie will go tomorrow for the second day, but that's going to be on the new changes with early childhood and the DOE. But that information just came to us last week, so we do have Ms. Harris there. So, Ms. Chappie, Ms. Donino?
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us today. We're excited to be able to share a little bit about early childhood. I have a dentist appointment later today, and I'm wondering if I'll be able to sit in a beanbag, so I don't know if that's going to be an option, but it sounds very nice, Dr. Smith. So, I'd like to introduce Priscilla Donino. She's with us today. She has been with us in our Early Childhood Department for several years now, but when Dr. Beth Mills left us, Priscilla Donino has taken her place as our VPK Early Childhood Coordinator, and we are so excited to have her, and she's doing amazing work. And I'm only going to talk for a little bit today because she has so much more to say that you'll be much more interested in what she has to share. So, I'm going to get started here. Okay, first thing on our, I'm going to go over our agenda for today. We're going to talk a little bit about our VPK programs and our locations in our schools. One of the unique things about Brevard Public Schools is we have VPK, we have Head Start, and we have Pre-K VE, and oftentimes, everybody just calls it VPK. So, today, we're going to try and differentiate for you what some of those programs look like, where they're at, and how, what the programs involve. And then, we're going to talk a little bit about Flickers, our Florida kindergarten readiness screener. That'll be some information there. Providers on probation, Ms. Donino's going to talk about that and how some unique opportunities have come out of that for us. Kindergarten registration and transition activities, the things that we've done so far this year to get our children excited about coming to school in the fall, trying to get all of our VPK students, our pre-K students, excited and ready for kindergarten, and then bringing new students in who, maybe their parents haven't made the decision yet to come to BPS, and we want to show them all the exciting things that we have to offer. Then, we're going to talk about our VPK Star Early Literacy Pilot that we're doing in conjunction with the state, an Office of Learning, Early Learning Grants that they keep giving us to help boost our programs, our first-grade I-Pilot, one-to-one program that we're embarking on this coming year, and then Dr. Mullins' Thrive by Five Initiative, and that's our most exciting piece, so we've saved that for last. All right, so, before we do that, though, I want to show you a little clip, and I'm going to have to go out of this. And then it doesn't get big. If I want it big, I need to go out. All right, so, Dr. Mullins, as part of our kindergarten, as part of our kindergarten registration activities, because most of our schools were doing virtual events this year to help welcome our families in, and usually, even when the events are at the school, they're very limited to the parents who have time to be able to come to the school. By doing it with, as a virtual event, we found that we've been able to reach out to so many more families because the schools can have the virtual events at all different times, and they can record them, and parents can log in. So, this year, Dr. Mullins was gracious enough to record a video for us to share at our kindergarten orientations throughout our district, and parents have just responded just overwhelmingly positive to their principals about how much they've liked seeing the superintendent there to welcome them to our school. So, this is just a little clip of that video.
...schools. I am Mark Mullins, your superintendent. You and your child are at the beginning, will be a memorable and important year. My children are now adults, but they were all educated in Brevard Public Schools. So, whether this is your first child entering our schools or your third, I know the range of emotions you may be feeling, because I felt them too. But know, these are some of the best schools the state has to offer. Here are a few more things I want you to know about Brevard Public Schools. Your child is entering a safe and welcoming educational environment. The teachers, administrators, and entire staff, including me, are here to serve your child, to give him or her the tools to succeed. Our mission and commitment is to serve every student with excellence as the standard.
All right, so, parents just loved that, teachers loved it, principals thought it was wonderful, so thank you, Dr. Mullins, for doing that for us. All right. No, I don't want to do it. Nope, not again.
Didn't love it that much.
All right, so I'm going to start with our Step Forward VPK programs. On the screen, I don't know if you can see the screen that well. Oh, you have it in front of you. Okay. So, on the screen, you can see where we have our Step Forward programs. Our Step Forward programs are in our Title I schools. The way that they are funded is through VPK funding from the state. Parents have to get a certificate from the Office of Early Learning through our local Early Learning Coalition, and they bring that certificate to our schools, and that pays for a portion of the day, and the additional portion of the day is paid for through Title I funding. So, that's why those programs have to be in our Title I schools, because that's how the funding is worked out. Our expected enrollment for next year in the Step Forward classrooms is 300 students. So, these are the sites that we're looking at for next year, the number of classes at each school, and our, how many children will be there. Our next programs are our Blended VPK programs. Our Blended VPK programs are a combination of Title I schools and some non-Title I schools, but that makes the funding sources different. If you see here, the Title I classes, or the Title I schools all have one program, as well as the other schools. No school has more than one blended program at this time. The blended program consists of 10 non-ESE students, so just general education students, and up to eight ESE students. And the ESE students are staffed in through our Student Services, and the other children in the classroom, the Gen Ed students, they have VPK certificates. So, the funding in those classrooms comes from the 10 VPK students, and the additional funding comes through Exceptional Students Services. Absolutely.
Just wanted to include one other item on our blended programs. They are open to anyone in the district, so you do not have to live in that school district in order to apply for the Gen Ed spots in the school zone. Okay, so anyone can attend there.
We have 288 slots for those students for next year. Then, we have our Head Start VPKs. Those were the Head Start programs that you just heard about, and those programs are funded with Head Start funds and VPK funds. We have 380 slots for those for the upcoming school year. Then, we have our High School CTE programs. We have five, currently five schools with CTE programs that are early childhood VPK programs. And those are a combination of our high school students in those programs, learning and working with the teacher, assisting the VPK students in those classrooms, and we have the expectation of 100 students in those programs for next year. Well, before I go on to the next slide, I do want to share that I did not talk about our Pre-K VE programs, because those are not funded through our VPK funding. So, we have Pre-K ESE programs at many, many of our schools. Dr. Bias and I have been working to try and create more of a continuum of services for our children at all of our schools, because a lot of our schools either have a Pre-K VE program, or they have the blended classroom. What we're working on is to try and make sure that, our goal is to have each school have a Pre-K VE and a blended classroom, so that students can transition from the Pre-K VE into the blended classroom, and then into kindergarten, or wherever they need to be on that continuum of services. So, that's what we're working on currently, to get more programs into schools. Okay, next, we're going to talk about our Florida kindergarten readiness scre- Okay, next, we're going to talk about our Florida kindergarten readiness screener. Our Florida kindergarten readiness screener is given to our new kindergarten students during the first 30 days of school every year. And during a normal year, our students come in, our teachers work with them for a week or so because it's a computerized test that they take, and they help them become acclimated with what that is going to look like, and then the students take the test. Well, before I go into all the caveats for this current year, I'm going to show you on your screen, you can see at the bottom, our Fall 2018-2019 results for our district. We were ranked number 15, and we had 53% of our students scoring 500 or above. The 500 or above is what they consider ready for kindergarten. All right? So that was in 2018-2019. Then in Fall 2019-20, if you look, we had, oh, we had 58%, I'm sorry. Then this past year, we had 61% of our students scoring over 500% or 500, which put them really, we were ranked sixth in the state, which was excellent. And then this past year, we went back down to 15. And the question is, why did we go back down to 15? Well, we went back down to 15 because of all the things that happened with testing this year. Some of the anomalies that we had this year were, return to brick and mortar was one of the biggest ones around the state. That first 30 days of testing, Brevard Public Schools was one of the first schools to return to, or first districts to return all students to brick and mortar, with the exception of our e-learners. And our e-learners came in for the Flickers testing, they came into the school. Whereas a lot of districts didn't start back till much later in the school year. So those districts were extended longer time to get their testing done because all the testing did have to be done at the school site. It was not able to be done at home. So there was that extension of the 30-day window. So whereas Brevard tested their students as early as, you know, the first 30 days of school, Miami-Dade didn't test their students till December. All right? So there was a big discrepancy there. So those students had actually several months more of instruction than our students did prior to testing. And there were less students tested because parents weren't necessarily bringing their children to school for that testing. But here's what it really looks like. On the screen in front of you now are the 11 districts that tested more than 90% of their students, Brevard being one of them. Most districts tested far less. Some districts didn't even make 70% of their students being tested. Brevard tested over 90%. Out of those 11 districts, if you look at the 2020-2021, Brevard tested 4,380 of our children, and we scored a 59% of our students scoring 500 and above. The only district to score higher than us out of the 11 districts is Gulf. They scored 68%. But look how many students they tested. They tested 116. So I really feel like that puts us up as the most students tested and the highest because Gulf is a very small county, and they only tested 116. If you look to the previous year, they tested 146. So Brevard tested 4,380, which was down from the previous year. The prior year, we tested 4,875. But this past year, if you look at the number of test takers for all 11 school districts, we are by far the highest. We have over 2,000 more than even Marion County, which tested 2,464, and we were the second highest. So we did extremely well. We did extremely well in the state, and it just shows that our students are making great gains in all of our early childhood programs and as far as being ready for kindergarten. So that's the good news.
So I just want to emphasize, Marilyn, thank you for doing a fabulous job of explaining that and disaggregating exactly what happened across the state because you look at the previous slide, and it's, it's a little disturbing. And we got, we had quite a bit of discussion when we first looked at it, a week or two ago, whoa, 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 I got to understand this better, and they dug into it again. But just want to, I want to acknowledge that we have made a commitment through our strategic plan and our priorities that early childhood is a priority for us because we know to make long-term sustainable improvements in literacy across the later grades, we've got to start at the youngest grades. And this is a reflection of the quality VPK programs we have. We're disaggregating further what is the Flickers performance of our own VPK kids versus students who don't come, or come to us from other VPK programs so that we can dig deeper and know exactly where are we seeing success, where are we seeing opportunities to grow and improve. So the data dig that you see us doing at our elementary grades, starting in third grade with the state assessment, all the way up through 12th grade, from FSA to AP to IB, et cetera, is really just, is replicated at our earliest grades. And I just want to commend our team for doing the hard work, but also doing the vulnerable work of assessing and evaluating our kids' performance at the youngest grades and holding ourselves accountable to continuous improvement even before they come to us in that first educational, most formal educational experience in kindergarten. So well done, team.
Thank you. And then here are just some of the additional caveats for the 20 kindergarten screening. There are significant differences in the number of students participating in the testing. Statewide, there were nearly 60,000 fewer students who screened than previous years. Some of Florida's largest counties have only a fraction of the students screened when compared to Fall 2019, and that was what I showed you. Due to circumstances related to the opening of the schools, the administration of Flickers was not standardized in terms of typical screening window. The above should be considered when reviewing the change of performance shown on the following charts at the statewide and county levels. Information related to the attendance in VPK is not available to consider with this data. It's unclear of the effects of lack of normal preschool experience for those students now in kindergarten. So this slide here is from the state, and they're trying to make sure that everybody across the state recognizes that when you look at the data on the face, it's not necessarily what it looks like, that you really do have to do that deep dive in to see what, how many students did you test, what was your testing window? Were you testing at the beginning of the year when they were really just coming into kindergarten? Or did you test after three months of instruction, which would make a difference for anyone? So I think Brevard has a lot to be proud of here, and our teachers really need to be recognized for all the hard work they've done during a very difficult year and a half. So they've done a great job. Okay, now we're going to let Ms. Donino take over, and she's going to talk about Providers on Probation.
Thank you, Marilyn. And just a really, another big shout out to Dr. Mullins for being the champion for early childhood this year and last year. We started to hear that breaking through when we got ready for Thrive by Five, which we'll talk about a little bit later. But thank you for that. So when you look at this slide and you see Providers on Probation, you may think right away, oh, my goodness, that doesn't sound good. But actually, it was an opportunity more than it was a challenge because it let us know that we were so close on that edge. But again, we know that the testing was not equitable across our districts. So when we took a look at this Providers on Probation, both Dr. Smith and us together because we all have VPK programs, and we said, we think this is an opportunity for us to dive a little bit deeper into who is arriving on our doorstep when we start the school year? What are the students coming in with? Have we really considered that factor before we start planning for instruction? Sure, we have our standards because we're a standards-based district, but we also have to consider the student that arrived before we planned for that instruction. That plan is the foundation of the triangle, the strongest structure that we know. So I want to take you through this slide in a little different way than you may be expecting. Let me find my way into my notes. And good afternoon. It is my pleasure to be here to share with you on early childhood. This has been my life's work, so I'm really happy to be doing it right here in Brevard Schools. So when you look at this, Marilyn just shared that in kindergarten, we look at the Flickers scores to stay the readiness of the students that are in kindergarten and how we're going to plan for their instruction. But in a VPK classroom, whether it's a public school center or a private provider, that is used to determine the credibility of that school and that center and that classroom. And it's done in conjunction with VPK assessment. So because we do not have accurate data from Flickers, we will not have any readiness rate scores this year. So when you look at this slide and you see 2018, 2019, it's because that is the last time we had accurate data. So in the, in that data year, 17 of our schools were noted to be not yet on par. In other words, a Provider on Probation. But we looked at that as an opportunity to find out what we could do. So the state offered us a variety of target areas that we would use to improve the instruction in our classroom. And in the same way that Dr. Smith said, all the adults in the room are important in the education of those young children. It is not just the teacher running alone. It is in concert with the instructional assistants in the classroom. So we chose Staff Development Plan for all of our VPK programs because we need to also educate and provide professional development for our instructional assistants. They have equal time communicating and working with the young children in that classroom. Though the teacher may be required to write the lesson plans, it is every member in the classroom that implements it. So we chose Staff Development because they are the most critical resource in the room. And if you look to the right of the slide, our positive takeaways from this year were that teachers were planning and delivering standards-aligned activities: phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, vocabulary and language development. And you know, as our board members, that we're looking at that in third grade, we're looking at it in sixth grade, 10th grade, and 12th grade. So we know that if we do that foundation in early childhood, we are going to be setting up students for success because we're going to be confident and ready. And the other piece that we need on that balance scale is social-emotional interactions, not just social-emotional learning or instruction, but truly, it's the interactions between the teacher and the student and between the student to student that makes a classroom that is a safe learning environment. And we had the same thing there. We saw positive communication and respectful learning environments. Were some children still a little bit on the out-of-bounds? Well, of course, we're talking about four-year-olds. But before we may have had 60% inbound and 40 out, we were more moving towards the 85% inbounds. That's a tremendous gain in a four-year-old classroom. Those are students now heading into kindergarten, ready to learn. So our takeaway from this for next steps for 21-22, since we are going to stay in the Provider on Probation status, we want to expand that same kind of learning in the same way that Head Start has already done by implementing this professional development for all teacher and instructional staff members next year. This year, we may have only had it with a third of our classrooms. In our Step Forward and Blended Programs, we're looking at now 100%. We're going to start with the professional development, which is offered by Office of Early Learning, and then we're going to have coaching with the teachers and the instructional assistants. And I think across Brevard, our almost 1,100 children are in for a wonderful year. So now let's talk about the excitement in getting ready for kindergarten registration and transition. I have to say that our partnership this year with government and community relations was invaluable. Maybe because we were stuck inside more, we really got to know more people in our buildings, and they came over and they said, we want to help you, what can we do? Well, just take a look at the slides. They helped us put four Pars flag banners across our district, all the way from Titusville High School down to Palm Bay High School and elementary schools in the middle. And what we said to the communities with those flag was, we're ready for you. Brevard Public Schools is ready to welcome you to our family, and we can't wait for you to register. We had a podcast episode on what it meant to get ready for kindergarten that families could listen to and also how they could help their children this summer. Space Coast Daily came through with the help of Community Relations and did an interview on how to get ready for kindergarten, how to register for kindergarten, and why it's so critical to register early so they can begin the journey with their child now and get all the resources that our Early Childhood Department offers. Dr. Mullins, again, we're going to give you another little clip. We broke it up a little bit into the different pieces. His welcome to families and what he says in this particular clip really speaks to the heart of everybody in this room and anybody watching right now. Kindergarten is the beginning of learning for their formal education. Of course, prior to coming to kindergarten, we'll talk a little bit more about, but this one was great. I can tell you the virtual orientations that were created and implemented in our 56 elementary schools, 57, but Meadow Lane Intermediate doesn't have one of these kindergarten orientations. So we just had 56. You cannot believe what they learned about how to create videos, how to take families on a walk in their school, how to use breakout rooms to actually have interpreters in those rooms to translate for families that didn't speak English. I know that all of you represent different schools in our district. Take a look at your schools. They're in the process now of uploading the recorded virtual orientations, and just sit back and enjoy them. They were made to be family-friendly, child-friendly, and adult-informative. So they did a wonderful job. Transition to Kindergarten Regional Summit, Mrs. Klein just shared where Tara is right now, gathering some more information for you. So I'll just tell you that the short one, we participated in on a call. We saw that Brevard was, as usual, ahead of the curve, that we were creating virtual orientations that many had not even considered attempting. So we shared what we were doing already in Brevard, and we did learn a few new things about another way to outreach in the community. So hopefully, in our next update, we'll be bringing you some of that information. So we want to just share this little clip of Dr. Mullins.
I'll pay you for your time later. I did not insist to be in there. ... years to build the foundation. Kindergarten is one of the most important to build the foundation for your child's learning journey. That journey includes academically, socially, and emotionally. We all know it's a fast-paced world. New concepts and technologies emerge rapidly. A child's thinking and creative ability need to be sharpened at this early age so she or he can quickly adapt to new changes ahead. Creativity in our youngest kids also fosters mental growth by providing the chance to experiment with new ideas, new ways of thinking, and problem-solving. Creative activities help celebrate a child's uniqueness and diversity as well as offer the opportunities for us to personalize our teaching for each child.
And that message is extremely powerful, especially in these times.
My wife talks over me all the time, so don't worry about it.
So funny. But especially in these times, look at how creative we had to be as adults over the last 14 months. So it just really reminded us of how important it is for us to raise young children who are ready for change. So change is coming down the pike again. So I'm excited to share with you the information about this VPK Star Early Literacy Pilot. Yes, that is the same thing you hear in Flickers. Yes, it's exactly the same thing in Flickers. So this year, Office of Early Learning offered a pilot program voluntary to all VPK programs in the state. So 1,623, I believe, in Florida opted to join the pilot, and out of our 50 classrooms, we had 25 teachers volunteer to be part of it. We thought it was important to not tell them to participate in it because their, their load was already full this year. We wanted them to join it if they were ready and wanted to take that journey. And we were so excited to have so many join. And it's funny, as you look at the list of elementary schools, you don't know this, but I know, it represents Head Start programs, Blended Programs, and Step Forward. So we had teachers on their own, not knowing who else was in this pilot. So we are well represented. And what that does for us in this two-year pilot is it gives us a voice. So when you see those VPK teachers, tell them thank you for involving Brevard Public Schools in this. I wanted to share just a little bit more information about it, and I think the most caveat and takeaway from this is this will allow VPK to kindergarten to have two years of continuous data, same item to the next same item. In the past, it's always been an apple data piece over here and an orange data piece over here, and we tried our best to mix it together, but it really never worked. So I feel like we have a great opportunity this year. The benefit of these teachers that took this journey is that the state gave them a device and a headset for their classroom, which they can keep part of BPS, as you may ask, but it's for the classroom use for students as well as the teachers. So that was a nice gift that they received. And next year, they'll only have to do the Star Early Literacy with their students three times a year, and they'll get a pass on the VPK assessment. And that's because we started in January this year. So we're very excited to say that we're in the pilot and we're in it with a lot of classrooms. What else is coming down, as you heard Marilyn say, we are getting a lot of money through grants, and really, across the board, we've never had funding like this for all of our programs. We get such small amounts. So you may remember that last summer, with the Rising Kindergarten Grant, we were able to offer 20 days of instruction for children that were rising into kindergarten. we were able to offer 20 days of instruction for children that were rising into kindergarten with a plethora of materials for them to use in the classroom, and they got to take them home at the end of the program. So that was one way that we used our fundings. And what it also did was it provided experience for those teachers to see what social and physical distancing was going to be like in the classroom. So it was a professional development for our staff as well as a win-win educationally for our students. Then the Phase Four Grant came through as a continuum on that. And that was again for those same students that attended in the summer. So you'll see right on the screen right now, each school received a guided reading program from Fountas and Pennell, the Guiding Read and Kick, that has 200 titles and six copies of each. Balance of fiction and nonfiction. And I've been in Brevard Public Schools for over 30 years. Never have I seen a purchase like this for all schools. So this was so positive. It's like a checkout library for small group instruction for teachers and their students. Every kindergarten team and every first grade team also in our district receive that. And it's a checkout library for the ESE teachers that share those grade-level students. So those are books for every student that attends Brevard Public Schools. And there's online components for families to access the texts at home. So I just can't tell you how beneficial this has been. And now other upcoming summer programs, they're going to be using these because they're not the core curriculum. They're going to be using this again for the summer program. So we really got two uses out of this in such a short period of time. You'll see some words up here. Literacy STEM Kits, you'll see Engineer a Coaster along with that. So that's coming through with the additional funds that we had after paying for the Fountas and Pennell. So let me tell you a little bit about what the children are going to learn with these kits. We know that children are play-based, and they're always thinking of something to do. If you have any young children at home, they're always tinkering and trying to take something apart and put it back together, and sometimes without success. But those are our future engineers, so embrace that journey. So we want to teach them in school how to do that with products that are easily able to go back together. So with the Literacy STEM Kits that we purchased for each and every kindergarten classroom. So these are not shared materials. So if you're teaching, know anyone teaching kindergarten in Brevard right now? I know we have 230 classrooms. They each received a kit with these STEM kits. And when the children engage in this, not only do they learn more about literacy and storytelling, but they also learn to problem solve. And they learn a lot about structural engineering and building and creating. So that's the highest level play, especially when it is planned intentional and purposeful. And when you look at the Engineering a Coaster, I'll tell you what those children are having. They're having a hands-on exploration of speed, gravity, angles, and motions that cannot be learned in any other venue. And imagine that now they'll have the language vocabulary and terminology to go along with it. And we know at five, they can learn all of that vocabulary. So we're excited about the grants. Lot going on in early childhood. And I'll turn first grade back over to Marilyn.
Okay, so we're really excited about a collaboration that we in Early Childhood are working on with our Educational Technology Department. This coming year, we are going to be doing a first-grade one-to-one iPad pilot with five of our elementary schools. All schools were offered the opportunity, but this year, so many teachers had so much on their plates that the schools that you see listed below, Atlantis Elementary, Holland Elementary, Ocean Breeze Elementary, Port Malabar Elementary, and Saturn Elementary, each of those schools had every one of their first-grade teachers for next year say, "Yes, I want to be a part of this iPad pilot." So it is a collaboration. We've been working with Don Bronstein in Educational Technology, and she is working with Apple Computer along with her team. And every child in those classrooms will be provided an iPad for their use, but the iPads do belong to Brevard Public Schools. And the teacher receives an iPad to use with all the other students. And they will be using, the Apple is providing the curriculum and different apps and things that can be used. And the teachers start receiving training as of May 24th. And it's going to be a very exciting year for those students in those classrooms because they will have one-to-one devices. So we're looking forward to that. And it's great news that those kids are going to have the opportunity to have those because some schools already do have one-to-one in their first grades, but not in these schools. So it's a great opportunity.
Okay, now here it is, we're saving the best for last. I think that this graphic right here on the screen really speaks volumes to all of us. I remember early on in teaching, and probably many of you had heard, "Oh, the first three years of life, the first three years of life." But when you look at this graph, it's pretty clear to see that it's the first year of life. That so much is happening in that first year of life. And all of these different functions, they develop sequentially. And if you look a little bit to the left on that graphic, you'll see that in vitro, all of those things are already developing. So by the time the child is five months old in the womb, they are already having sensory pathways for vision, for hearing. They're already developing a language because they hear what's going on outside of them. They're not understanding words, they don't have that yet. But they're understanding terms, sounds, rhythms, and they're hearing the way that our language works. And what I mean by "our" language is every language in the world. Because that child doesn't know which country they're going to be born in and where they're going to be speaking. So I put a little line on here for age five in kindergarten. Look at where they're already going on the sensory pathways and the language. We're starting to move down. So that time between the first year of life and age five is monumental in the development of a child. Milestones have a variance, but that window is very big. And here's a little bit more about the first five years of life. Our brains are wired. These babies' brains are wired at birth. And they're learning at a capacity that all of us in this room wish we could, but we cannot, not yet. We're on the downslide over there. But they're learning and they're taking everything in. And that's why children don't need to sit still to hear a story all the time. They can be on the move. On the move, they're still taking it in. And actually, if we stop them when their body needs to move, we're actually going to be stopping them from learning and listening. So we kind of want to keep that in the back of our mind. We used to think, was it environment or was it genetics? And we would go back and forth on that as well. But actually, it's mostly environment. The positive thing about that is we can do so much. And the other side of that is we don't have that much time in their environment before they come to school. And most school doesn't start until age three, two or three in some preschools. So we really have a big difference that we can make in that. And it's all about the interactions with the adults and the other children in the room. And when they're positive, the child gets positive affirmations. And when they're negative, they're going to get the same thing, and that is what they're going to repeat. So moving on a little bit about Thrive by Five, that's just a foundational piece that we need to know. The overview of this program is to meet them when they're born. Our goal in the district, driven by Dr. Mark Mullins, is that we want to be the first one that greets them and their family when they leave the hospital. And I'm going to share the bags that we have and your homework assignment. We don't give anything out for free. There's always going to be something attached. So the overview is that we want to meet them when they're born. We want to provide them with information from Brevard Public Schools. And the components for Thrive by Five are to get books into the hands of children, not just when they leave the hospital, but throughout their elementary career, that we're going to find a way, reaching out to the community to do that. Our new team has just been formed in the month of March, and it includes everyone that works in Brevard Public Schools that has something to do with the education, the support of young children, parents, and their families. So we're starting with what we call the dozen. And we know that each one of those people that are the leads on those departments is going to be building a community and a team of their own. So that if we put too many in at one time, it's going to be too hard to make the decisions. So they're excited right now to launch the website. And our goal for the launching of the website is the end of May. So we've been working very hard and hope to have that come to fruition for you, Dr. Mullins. We're pulling for that to happen. We're right now putting in all different categories. So this is just a little sampling of what would be in there. So if there was a page for child development, we would want to have links for all of these things. And what we know about our website is that it has to be eye-catching and fast-moving and meeting the needs of all of the families. Because what we learn about young people today, the parents of our kindergarten students, they want to click a button and they want to go. And they don't want to read a lot in the beginning, but they want to have access to all the things they need. So we're going to really be designing our new website to really meet those needs. And literacy does start at birth. When you look at this picture of the first mom, when you let your child read, you're building a reader. These are the little catchy phrases we want to get out into the family. We don't want them going to WWW, we want them coming to BPS. When they think, "I want to know something about my child and their development," let's go on that website, Thrive by Five. I think we can find out everything we need to know. Because when they go on the wild web, I call it the wild web, they are going to, we don't know where, what country they're going to end up in. But we want them to get access to resources that they can use right here in our own backyard. That's it for all of us. Hopefully, you may have had an opportunity to look at the links on the back. And I say especially the last one. The Department of Education for this website has added more bells and whistles. And there's a plethora of information out there for teachers, for parents, for directors, for children. It's easy to navigate, and that's what we have to think about too, something that navigates easily for us. So thank you for your time, and now your homework assignment. We're hoping, we're working with hospitals already, and Dr. Mullins, I know, has already been in contact with Health First, I believe. So he may share some of that with you at another time. But everyone that leaves a hospital in Brevard County is going to go home with one of these bags that says "Brevard, Thrive by Five." And in it is going to be the first book that we give them of many to come in their childhood. Because anything that's repetition is good for the brain. If you flip open your book, you'll see that there's information on what families can do with those books along with our logo. So every time they open it up, VPS is on the brain. They'll have a magnet for their refrigerator or cabinet so that when they want to reach out to us, they have our website right there. Be ready, easy to access. We have two handouts in there for them as well. Literacy Begins at Birth and Some Quick and Easy Things, spoken right to the families of what they can do starting on day one, as well as a link to a room, which is for young families. If you sign up on their app, they'll send daily things to the family depending on the age of the child. Free access, embedded, wonderful for families. We also are going to be having either a bib or a little lap mat. This one has the year on it, 2038. So because we lost a year of this work, Dr. Mullins, because of COVID, these are a little outdated, but they'll make nice cloths to clean. So we were going to be sure that they have something else. Have we said COVID cleaners? So we're going to have these in all of the bags as well as additional things. And hospitals may want to even add something from them to the bag because the bag is leaving the hospital, but it's recognizing that Brevard Public Schools is there to welcome you. So here's your assignment. Find someone who has just recently had a child or expecting a child and pay it forward. Pass this book on to them. Have them be our litmus test. Have them go on the website and look when it opens. Have them give you their feedback on the information. Mothers need bags, so here's a bag that they can carry around the community. Thank you for allowing us the time, and Early Childhood appreciates everything you do to support us. Thank you.
You know, a couple of weeks ago, we heard about CTE and launching our kids on to to college and career opportunities and the enthusiasm we all enjoyed in Rachel Rutledge. Do we have the same kind of enthusiasm with our youngest kids as well, and Priscilla? Thank you for your passion and your love for our earliest kiddos, all the way down to zero, pre-zero into our VPK programs. I'll share an update with my conversation with Steve Johnson last week, CEO of Health First. I said, you know, we know that there's somewhere around 5,000 to 6,000 births in Brevard a year. At least right now, we're growing. And we want more time educating our kids. But the prospect of that at age four, three in some cases, all the way through 18, that's difficult. We need them when that curve is at the highest. If we can have every one of our kindergarteners coming to kindergarten scoring 500-plus, our trajectory for their continued proficiency in reading and math and so on is so much more favorable. And I said, "We want to promote literacy among our earliest kids, like as soon as they're born." I said, "Steve, can you, we'd love to get these resources into the birthing centers around Brevard." He says, "I think we can help with that." We birth around 4,000 of the kids in Brevard just through Health First. And so he's very excited to talk. In fact, I have a meeting with one of his staff later this week of what that looks like, maybe even some sponsorship to help offset the cost. So our health community partners are very excited about this option and this opportunity as well. And just think of the wave of impact we're going to have three, four, or five years from now as we foster and promote this commitment of early literacy from day one. It is my vision and dream and hope that over the next, all right, 24 months, anywhere you go, anywhere you go, you cannot escape this recognition, this commitment, this community commitment. If you go to Publix, if you go to CVS, if you go to the doctor's office, if you go to the dentist's office, if you go to the hair salon, Thrive by Five. We, as a community, are committing to promoting literacy among our families and our kids from the very day that they bless us with their presence. So we're excited. Priscilla, thank you for picking up and running with the torch in a short period of time and overcoming things in the midst of COVID. Marilyn, thank you for your leadership and trying to keep up with Priscilla. That's a good problem to have, right? And Ms. Klein, thank you for not letting COVID get in the way. We've been dreaming of this for two years now. And we were just about there when that nasty thing came around last March. And these ladies have continued to charge on, so thank you.
Ms. McDougall?
I want to thank you all because it was a great presentation. I'm very excited. I just have one question about the webpage. Are we going to have that able in another language, for instance, Spanish? I just wondered if we were going to offer that in another language.
The plan is to be able to do that.
Okay.
We're working on that now. Yes, the plan is to have it in multiple languages.
The district pays for a service to just bolt chassis up to your website, and they're using it on all platforms.
I just want other people to know.
Yeah, so that's, it should be seamless.
And I just did learn something else today, like literally 15 minutes before I walked down here, that we can create a PowerPoint, and there is a link and a button in which you can pick another language. So it would be probably a wonderful thing to be able to post little, like if we want to have Ideas of the Week or something like that, when then a parent could choose that language and then it would be subtitled in that language. So I just heard of that. I don't know anything about how to do it, but two of the teachers here, matter of fact, it was Jody and Javon, that they told me that they could do that. So I'm going to learn about that. It would be nice to have little clips. People like things that are short, two, three minutes, like a song, short.
Ms. Campbell?
Yeah. I've got several questions. First of all, I love that you say "plethora," Ms. Anino.
That's one of my favorite words, "plethora." And you gave us a plethora of information today. I, so I'll just toss these questions out one at a time, and y'all, whoever wants to take them, take them. I think the answer to the first one is going to be, "We don't know yet." But I was, have been thinking in preparation for today with the reorganization of the Office of Early Learning now coming under DOE, which I think is going to be a good thing all around so that we, on a state level, can do what we're trying to do here in Brevard, which is the seamless transition. Any ideas of how that may impact the work that we do yet? Or is that what the training that's going on today? Okay, all right.
That's the information that we're finding out today.
Okay.
We'll have more.
All right, because I know they've been talking.
I think it's going to be a very good thing. It's going to really align what we're doing.
Right. Good, good, good. All the different kinds of VPKs, I thank you for going through that because I know I've been through that, but I usually see them in a school and they're, it's, you know, this one's this and this one's, it gets confusing sometimes. So I, as far as the, obviously, Head Start has the, you have to have a certain percentage at least below the poverty line. There's those requirements. And I, obviously, our ESE, you have to have an IEP. And then you've said what the blended is. But when it comes to like our Step Forward, is there a... But when it comes to like our step forward, is there a requirement for that VPK program?
The requirement is that they live in that school zone. Because it is funded by Title I, their title, the Title I funding is for the students that will be coming to their schools. So those are for students that live in that school zone.
Okay. So then, I guess my next question is thinking of all of them. And I know there's a process. It's been a while since I've had my last VPK kid, I mean, six years at least, seven. But when, you know, so you have to get your certificate, right? You go through that process, and then all over the county, and then you take it to your school where you're going to do your VPK. What is it, is, what limits our VPK enrollment? Do we have, I know Head Start is limited, because that's our grant. But in our other programs, is there a limit? I mean, if we had, just throwing this out there, if we had 200 more kids across the county say, I want to be in VPK, and they were in a cluster, could we open more? Are we limited by the state saying, you can have this many of this, this much, this kind of funding?
I'll say what I think, and Marilyn will correct me if I, if I misspeak on that. It's based on space and availability. So remember that schools were built for K-6 in most of our elementary schools. So if they are, we are fortunate enough to have a classroom that is available or affordable, then we can go there. That's pretty much what will stop us. And if they have the right equipment and the right playground, the right size classroom. So there are requirements from a VPK standpoint for serving four-year-old children.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's anything else that would stop.
Right, right. And I, listen, I know that we have some fabulous private providers as well, across the county. Our family, you know, made use of those as well. I mean, it, being in a state that provides free pre-K is, is just amazing. You know, we really are blessed to be here in Florida where that is paid for. The last thing that I had to do regarding Thrive by Five is, how do we keep the funding going for that? I know our, the Schools Foundation has partnered with us to doing some of that. But how, for sustainability, how are we going to be able to keep the funding going for this initiative? That's so important.
Yeah, we're, we're talking to everybody. My first conversation is with, you know, Health First, and we'll look for some other sponsors as well. We, we committed some one-time money as a district to, to launch this. What is the bag? $10? The, the cost to put the bag together is right around?
Yes, between 10 and 12, depending on what we may put in it. But we want it, we don't want to start something that's not sustainable. So that's really a great, great question for you to ask, Ms. Campbell. And we really want to build business partners. But we don't want it to be a one-way business partner. We want to build reciprocal business partnerships. So that if they're doing something for us, you know, what are we going to be doing as a school system for them? And we have a variety of things still mulling around with our team. But that is our next big meeting. First, we had to work on our website, and how can we work with hospitals? And how can we get that in place? And then really, it's really building relationships in the community. There are businesses that want to support schools, and there, there's new businesses opening all the time. So again, if anyone on the board hears of someone, please send them our way to, we were hoping to reach out and be able to explain what we're trying to do as everything opens up, venues open up outside.
Thank you.
United Way has been an ongoing partner with us in this discussion as well. And they've committed funds along the way. Again, it got kind of hiatused a year ago, so we're continuing that conversation with them.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that thread? Early Learning Coalition has a large budget of grants that they give out every year. And you couldn't imagine a better opportunity here for them to pick up that. And also, I mean, we know Health First, I mean, I've had, four of my children have been born in Health First hospitals, and we always get a bag. So they're already spending money to create that. Maybe the idea is, is to take that money away and pay for this piece, you know what I mean? Like a flip. Well, then have that formula fund, fund our stuff.
Thank you for sharing your connection with them. I know that you work closely with them, so I'm really happy to hear you bring that up. We are working with them. I do serve on their board now, will have for many years, actually. So they do want to support us. And in our kindergarten transition, they donate all the books that go out to families. So they're already our partners. So I'm going to go out and talk to them a little bit more about this. So thank you for bringing them up.
Ms. Finkins?
Yeah. A couple of things. So number one, love that you have Brown Bear in there. My, my daughter, since she was two years old, made me recite that before bedtime, still to this day. I may not love that book anymore, but, so I love that so much. Thank you. Also, as a mother of a prospective kindergartner for Surfside, I had the pleasure of watching the virtual orientation and participating in that. And it was fantastic. And they actually, I don't know if every school did this, but they had a little video of a student kind of doing a tour of the campus, and it was really, really sweet. And all of the kids that were participating in that virtual orientation were super excited to wave at each other and see the, see the teachers and all of that. So I loved it. I think it would be great to keep it, even if we are having in-person ones, so not a bad idea. So I kind of know some of the answers to these questions, but I just want to ask, and if you don't have the answers to them, it's obviously okay. But do we currently have a pre-kindergarten in every school? And, okay. And do we have one in every Title I school? Okay. I love that you guys mentioned that you're thinking about kind of that continuity of our VPK students that are in blend-in programs and VE, so that there could be some kind of transition for them, hopefully, prior to getting into kindergarten, which is really awesome. You kind of answered this in terms of, you know, is it a funding issue or a capacity issue? I think, you know, coming from the world of early learning and early intervention, obviously, I understand the importance of this. I think it's wonderful that we have a goal for our kindergarten readiness. But really, there's no way to improve that or achieve that without improving that pre-K. We're doing a great job, don't get me wrong. But I think there's room for improvement, you know? It would be wonderful, just wonderful, if we can have a pre-K in every single one of our schools. I know there are amazing private providers out there, but I'm well aware of the lack of funding from the state level. It's making it less and less enticing for them to continue VPK, VPK programs at their private daycares and schools, because it's not funded well, and it's hard for them to sustain, especially those smaller ones. And I'm a little, I'm a little concerned what that might do for our children in the next coming years, whether or not those classrooms will still be an option in those private spaces, and whether or not we would have to kind of pick up the slack for that, for that capacity. So just something to throw out there. And the Thrive by Five, I just want to know if there's room on your team? I see you have teamwork going on there, and I would love to, to be more involved. This is something I have a serious passion for, and I would love to advocate it at, at any level. So thank you.
Thank you. We would absolutely love to have a VPK in every school. The more programs we can have, the better. But one of the things, as I talked about the mixed funding that we have, the Early Learning Coalition, through the Office of Early Learning, the certificates that the students get, pays for three hours of the VPK day. The rest of the funding comes from our Title I programs, our Head Start programs. So as we look at space, we also have to look at that funding piece. And that's why, right now, it's in our Title I schools, because we have that option for the funding piece. But yes, we definitely agree that the more programs we can have, the better.
Is that three hours a statutory? Or is that just something that the Early Learning Coalition has agreed to pay out of theirs?
It's 540 hours, that is what the state provides. You could do four days a week, four hours a day. They don't tell you how. You have to set up. You have a lot of flexibility. Some centers, I've seen, some private centers, they'll give a full day, and it goes from August to December. And then they have another session for different students that goes from January. So the, the state gives flexibility for your scheduling. They pay for 540 hours, and you may divide them up in any way that you like. So that isn't any larger.
On that note, is there, has there ever been any thought of doing a split day where, and I throw this out there, because when I was doing my student teaching in Oklahoma, they actually don't require full-day kindergarten, so they, they don't require kindergarten at all. So a lot of, even their kindergartners were split day, they'd have morning kindergarten, afternoon kindergarten. If we have the three-hour day, is there any possibility that we could have? Just thinking outside the box here, out loud, I realize that on, you know, televised board meeting, but a split-day VPK program where we had morning VPK and afternoon VPK, because then you have same classroom, same teacher, full-time funding for, you know, we get the full funding and facility is already there? Any thoughts on that?
We haven't really talked about it, but it's certainly something we could look at.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just piggyback off of that? Is, is it the same transportation requirement for pre-K if we're doing it in a public school, just like our K to 12? Are we mandated to provide transportation back and forth?
We don't provide transportation for our VPK students. Pre-K VE receives transportation. But VPK does not.
Okay, thank you.
Again, those are the funding things with pre-K VE. They, they receive transportation, but VPK does not.
Is that true for our Head Start? We don't do transportation for Head Start either? They can, okay.
Mr. Susan?
So one of the things that I find was the saddest moment of my life, honestly, is when my daughters and my son were born. And you walk down the hallway, and as you walk down that hallway, there's moms, who are single moms, who are inside of there, having their child, and don't have the supports they need in order to further what we are trying to do. And that's our bond to those children to try to get them there. But I'll tell you that there is, one of the saddest things is seeing that firsthand, watching that relationship and the bonding and everything else. And some of those moms who literally have to go back to work two or three days later because of their circumstances or whatever, it's just sad. So this, that you're putting together, makes me almost cry, because there's things that they want and they need that they don't have. And that book, just like you guys, mine, mine's at home. It's been opened up so many times. My two-year-old was using it last night. It's, there's a bigger one, too, the bird one, right? There's, anyways, so I, I really appreciate what you do there. The other thing I wanted to talk about, Dr. Mullins, was that we forget that in the throes of us trying to graze these kids to become to third grade and thrive to five and all that stuff, it's like it's on our shoulders. When it's the furthering of our society, when we get to that level, that if we help these individuals, the burden on society is less and the, the increase on society is more, right? And the fact that we have to drive this and beg for money and everything else is ridiculous. So I'm on board as an ambassador, too, if you guys need me in any way. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you guys do. And those were just the two points that I wanted to make. And we got to take care of our pre-K teachers now at the state, because they didn't take care of them last year, and they didn't take care of them the year before, and it's time that we start doing that. Sorry, I got to throw it out there. Well, we're not. It's just, we continue to go around in circles, and the state needs to fix the problem. And it's not our responsibility, it's theirs. And we keep getting hit for it, and it's not fair. So, sorry, I just got to say it. Thank you.
So. We thank you for your support of Early Childhood very much.
I drove them nuts two years ago up there in the Capitol Building, running around the back scenes and everything else, and, and I appreciate it. And I'm going to do it again this year. I left them alone during COVID, so thank you.
So I cannot thank you guys enough. And I tend to be a little bit of an overachiever, so I'm wondering if I can have additional homework. I say that because I have a, I have a crop of six-month-old babies that are with me every day throughout the entire summer. And so if you would like for me to distribute to some additional parents, I would be happy to do so.
Just let us know how many.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, whatever you have, and I can always get more later. I have a couple, I have a couple pregnant mamas already that I'm, I'm working with. They're older children, so, so that'll be perfect. And then also, if I can support in working with Parish on the North End, have a great relationship with them, and would be happy to facilitate whatever discussion needs to take place for them to support as well. They have also, we, we provide drowning prevention information through my nonprofit, and the hospitals have been very gracious about including that in mommy bags, too. So I don't think it'll be a, a problem at all with Parish. And to kind of jump from what Mr. Susan said, and he, I'll say he danced around the issue a little bit. I love that you are, you all are looking at two-way business partner relationship. But if I'm being completely honest, I feel like on this issue, they're already getting back. If we are doing a great job with early childhood, as well as K-12 education, we are benefiting our community, we are benefiting our property values, we are building their workforce of the future, we are decreasing our crime rate in the community, we are, like, so much of the work that we do, and I say that not to be, I don't, I don't mean to be nasty when I say it, but I feel like we have to get out of the mentality, as an organization, that we're doing this for us and we need other people to help us do it. Like, we're doing this for our entire community, and the work that we do is critically important to the future of Brevard County. And I think the more that we start to have that conversation, that businesses do benefit when we have better schools. Businesses benefit when we are keeping kids in school instead of dropping out of school. Businesses are benefiting when they have high-quality workforce to keep their company successful. Realtors are benefiting when property values are increasing, because we have a phenomenal community to live in. And so I, I just think we need to start having those harsh conversations and not always, I think we, and not you all, I think we dance around that, right? Like, we're always afraid to, to point those things out to people, to help them to understand the importance of the work that everyone in VPS does. And so I would argue that we are already giving enormously, and we just need to convince the rest of the community to get on the Thrive by Five bus with us, because they're going to benefit as well. So anyway, off, off my soapbox, I apologize. I just think, you know, I, I mean, everything that you've said, that everything changes when we take care of our youngest children and put them on the right path for a bright future.
Can I just add one other thing, too?
Yeah.
Keep in mind how, how expensive are health insurances? And how many employees we have using these facilities as well, too? So just, you know, mutually exclusive.
Well, and not, not even hospitals, but I mean, quite honestly, there is not a business in Brevard County that doesn't benefit from us doing a better job with our, our youngest children. And all of our children, for that matter, right? They all benefit. And I think that's where we have to get outside of, of the mindset of, you know, what is the direct and look at the, the bigger picture thing, so.
And look at all the supports that, I mean, we look at Health First and Parish and Stewart, and we're like, hey, guys, we need to hit you up for some cash. But the bottom line is, is you look at the infrastructure of supports that happen from the women's clinics to everything else that, that we have, that, I mean, there are so many physicians and everybody else that are part of this that aren't just the, just the Health Firsts. All of our hospitals do a good job as far as donating to us already. Sometimes these other people get a free, free ride, and they should be a part of it. And I think they'd be willing to do it. There's just that, the formula companies, I mean, everything. We could really do something here. Who's the point of contact for us to send all these people to? Send me, send me a, send me an email, and that way I'll just send them to you.
He's going to send you a plethora of names.
No, 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 they'll call you. I won't send you a name. I'll just have them start calling you.
Marilyn was quick to, to pass that one off. I love it, love it, love it, love it.
When we do well by the children, then every community thrives. And that's just pretty much the way that the world works. If you look at communities that are doing well, and neighborhoods that are doing well, the children are well, well-cared-for, well-respected, and everybody talks to the children, then send that message. I think that's our work.
I just need you to send me an email, so I can send everybody to you. I'll just start talking.
So thank you, thank you, thank you for all of the fabulous work that you're doing on these initiatives. And I, I just am thrilled to see that we are moving forward. I think this is probably one of the most critical things that we can do, that will not only have an impact on, you know, these children that we're serving, but will have an impact on, on the district going forward. So we appreciate you. And before I forget, Pam, could you please add to the board member calendars that they have homework to do for Dr. Smith by June 30?
Like, send it 30 days early, and then two weeks before, and then.
Yeah, like multiple of them.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
And Ms. Klein will continue to bring six Thrive by Five bags to every board meeting, so that as you give this one out, you'll be able to pick up another one at the next board meeting.
I'm all for that. We can do it.
And you can't keep them for all your.
You must pass along.
Yeah, we'd have to hide this book, so. Yeah, we'd have to hide this book down.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? All right, if there's nothing further, then this meeting is now adjourned.